Wish them well in their retirement and thank them for their many years of service.
Thank you.
The next thing that I'd like to discuss, Mr. Chairman, is to just give an update on the reopening of schools. As everyone knows, we actually start on Monday, September fourteenth. And our plan is to begin with the preschool on Monday. Transportation, to my understanding, has is ready to go. We have been in constant communication with the bus company to make sure that transportation is ready for those little ones. Special programs, all of those students who are in special programs and they are located all over the district, they will start on Tuesday. I think it's important for everyone to know that those rooms have been inspected. Our facilities director, Will DeJesus, has connected with me on several occasions and has stated that those rooms are in very good shape. We know that certain requirements have to be met and they will be acceptable for our students to return to school on Tuesday, actually Monday and Tuesday. And PPE, in fact, I believe Will was delivering PPE to all of the schools today. And, you know, the thing I think that, you know, not only members of the community, but also, you know, staff is concerned about or have questions about is the ventilation issue that we have been addressing over these last several days. Let me give you all an update as to where we are with the ventilation. I know that one of the main concerns that resulted from our meeting last Thursday after discussing the E and E report was the high school, not only the high school, but specifically the trans building. And I want everyone to know that we have been giving that a lot of attention. One of the things, you know, that we feel very strongly about is doing everything humanly possible to get all of the rooms in the trans building to a place that is safe for students and staff to be on a daily basis. We actually, I think, have done some pretty creative problem solving. We're going to be doing some work on those UNIVENTS in the trans building. And the school committee will be voting on a resolution later on on the agenda to purchase 200 air HEPA, air ventilation units. And our thinking in making this recommendation was to use these air ventilation units in places like the trans building that may be having issues with air exchange and ventilation. These air purification units do exactly that. They purify the air. And our goal is to get the air exchange in each of those classrooms, not only in the trans building, but also in all of our classrooms and offices throughout the district so that they will be safe for students and staff to return. So lots and lots of work being done on this. I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we spent the good majority of our day problem solving and trying to come up with creative solutions to be in a position where we can utilize these rooms. So we will keep everyone posted. The other thing that I wanted to mention to everyone is, as you can imagine, given the focus over the last month or so on ventilation, lots and lots of districts are scrambling now to get some support with, to have the proper exchange of air in their school buildings. And given the age of our school buildings, not only in Cumberland, but throughout the state, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, which makes it difficult for us to get service technicians. But I think we have been relatively successful in getting a number of teams by reaching out to a number of different companies to help us get into all of our buildings and go classroom by classroom to service the UNIVENTS in each of our classrooms as best we can. So lots of work being done, Mr. Chairman. We will certainly keep everyone posted. And I can tell you that a lot of work has already been done. In fact, Mr. DeJesus, our facilities manager, is an electrician. He and the district's electrician have been on several roofs of our schools in the district. They have replaced belts and motors of us. The systems that we have on the roof of many of our buildings, the exhaust fan motors, we've discovered that a couple of those are, were not working. And as we heard in our fiscal subcommittee meeting this evening, several motors are coming in over the next couple of days. I know that some are coming in tomorrow. Two motors are going to be replaced at BF Norton. And I think also we're hoping within the next two business days to get motors fixed that community in Ashton. And what that means, I've learned a lot about ventilation over these last couple of weeks. And what that means is there'll be more fresh air coming into the building. So lots of focus on an issue that is important to everyone. And it just reminds me of the most important priority that we have focused our attention on. And that is health and safety of our students and staff. And we're going to make sure that that happens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. You have your hand raised?
Yes. So I wanted to acknowledge that last night, Mr. Costa, Mrs. Coughlin, Dr. Masterson held a town hall for the high school and middle schools. And I thought they did an excellent job in explaining what the first 30 days of school would look like. And there was a question asked around, when will we get to full 100% in-person learning, five days a week? And I think it's important for the public to know, and Mr. Mitchell, you can, you know, add in as well, but I think it's important for the public to know that there's at least two important factors that impact that. One is, can we keep students, can we keep a full classroom of students six feet apart? And we know in many of our schools, or especially the high school, that may be impossible. And another, a second factor is busing. Our limitation right now is 36, I think it is, students on a bus. If we have 100% students coming at once, we may not be able to do that. But the important thing is we're making a commitment to the CDC guidelines from a safety perspective. And six feet apart is what we're doing. I did some research and I looked at surrounding communities and some private schools to see what are, what are they doing? And I have not found a high school that is going back 100% full in person. Not Bishop Fian, not LaSalle, even Wheeler is doing eight days in, eight days out. You know, half splitting, splitting in half. This is, this is our reality right now. And Dr. Masterson and maybe even Mr. Mitchell last night said, you know, until we get a vaccine. There is some, you know, real truth to that. And I think people just need to understand what we're dealing with so that we can move forward and accept the situation that we're in and know that we're doing everything to keep our students and teachers safe. But the six feet distance is something that we are committed to as a district. And that is a major factor. I don't know if you'd add anything, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I would just, you know what? I'm so glad, Mrs. Friedman, thank you for mentioning the town hall last night or the forum that the two middle schools and high school did. Mrs. Coughlin, Dr. Masterson and Mr. Costa really did a nice job answering lots and lots of questions. And I do think when we provide that opportunity, it does sort of have a calming effect for just about everybody that is really feeling the stress of the situation that we're in right now. So they really, they really did a nice job with that. And I also need to mention that behind the scenes, you know, and he's doing it again tonight. You know, when you consider how important Mr. Chandler is in all of our presentations and in all of these events, not only formal meetings like this, but also these public forums that we do. He's, he's always right there and I just need to state that publicly. So, you know, your point is well taken. And, you know, I get emails like all of you do, members of the school committee, you know, questioning, you know, what can possibly be done to get his, you know, get all the students back into these schools? And we want nothing more. You know, this is an incredible challenge for us. Whenever, as everyone knows, whenever you're doing something for the first time, it really is challenging. And, you know, when you think about, you know, how schools have run historically for years and years and, you know, you know, it is, it is through trial and error that we are in a position to be as efficient as we are from the beginning of every school day to the end of the day, and including from the time that students are picked up at the bus stop until the time that they're dropped off and everything in between. You know, we are just so accustomed to routines and and we don't have those same routines anymore. So we're taking it one step at a time. I can tell you that everyone is working incredibly hard, as hard as we've ever worked. And our goal is to be in a position, when we can, to bring everybody back.
Mr. Chair?
You're muted, Mr. D'Monica.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Mitchell, I don't know if it's too soon to tell, but in your estimation, are we still on track for October thirteenth?
You know, that is our goal, is to get everybody, you know, into that hybrid model on the thirteenth, which is a Tuesday. That is, that is the goal. It is, you know, a full blitz to try and get that done.
Have there been any roadblocks or that you can see in the last week since our last meeting?
You know, I think, I think the biggest challenge is, you know, getting, getting the service techs in to get into, you know, our goal is to get into every classroom if possible. But, you know, I think there was some good news today. Actually, the Chairman D'Monica, you know, connected with me and recommended a possible business that might be able to, HVAC business that might be able to help us. We reached out to that company and they're going to be sending someone out on Monday to assess where we are. And hopefully we may get a couple of teams to help us there. So, you know, we've had many conversations with the mayor. He's right there with us, you know, and we are reaching out to, to anyone that can help us assess where we are with these UNIVENTS and make the reasonable repairs that we can. Now, and I do think it's, you know, that just triggered one other really important thing that I think the community needs to know. And that is, you know, we can't lose sight of the fact that this $83 million bond referendum is addressing all of the mechanical, all of the mechanicals in every single one of our buildings, which includes, you know, heating and ventilation. So, you know, that is, that is the good news. And, and that work will begin, they're actually in the design phase right now. And they're actually going to be breaking ground this spring. I think we heard today that we're looking, Alex, I think they said today in our meeting that it was going to be like in April where they will actually be breaking ground. And the first, one of the first things that they'll be doing is, and I'm not saying this is going to happen in April, but one of the first things that they need to do is get, get the trans building ready for the elementary schools that will be temporarily housed there while the work is being done on our elementary school, starting with Cumberland Hill first. And then I believe it's Cumberland Hill. And I actually don't remember the sequence, but I do remember that Cumberland Hill is first.
I have a couple more questions, but I think I'm going to take turn. I think give somebody else a chance, so.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Fiorello.
I just want to point out that the building committee is meeting for the first time in a while next week.
Is it Mr. Fiorello, is it by Zoom or is it in person?
It is by Zoom, as far as I know.
Okay, could you send me the link when you get one?
Absolutely, I'll make sure that, actually, Mr. Mitchell, Cindy can send that out to everyone, that'd be great.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Waters.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this or not, but I saw an article in The Breeze about North Providence going back full time. Can you shed any light on what the difference is between what North Providence is doing and what we're doing? If you might have heard anything in your superintendent meetings?
I, I, I don't know, Mrs. Waters. My guess is full time. I guess full time now has, the definition of full time has changed. It's not, you know, full time, five days a week, full time. Full time, I believe, can now be a hybrid model where students are in, all students are in full time at some point during the week. It's not, it's not, you know, the normal traditional schedule, to my knowledge, that, that, that we are accustomed to. But I can, I can reach out to Mr. Goho. I'm like, I would be surprised if they are going back full time. I'm like almost.
I could be mistaken, but that's what the article implied, that it was hybrid the first week to phase in, and then it was 100%.
Yeah, I can.
I'm just curious what, what the difference is.
I'll connect with him and, and let you know. But I don't believe it's, it's, I, I, I don't believe that that's the case, but I could be.
Mr. Mitchell of Valley Breeze says they're opting in for back to school and small groups split alphabetically. So I don't believe it's going to be.
For the first week.
Yeah. Right, it doesn't give it exactly, so it's just showing when it'll be. So, yeah, he can reach out. And Mr. Mitchell, I'd like to know, didn't North Providence still build a new high school, I thought, too? So. All right, thank you.
That would certainly help.
Yeah, Mr. Collins.
Now, Monday, pre-K is going back. And then Tuesday, the special programs will be going back. Now, will these special programs be at every single school?
Yes.
And all of the rooms that are going to be used, are they inspected and ready to go per the guidelines?
That, that is what has been reported to me by Mr. DeJesus, yes.
All right, Mr. Mitchell, we are seeing an email saying that some of the special ed classrooms were dirty. So if we could have Mr. Jesus look into that to make sure they are ready for those populations of students, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Collins, you have another question?
I do, I have a question now. In the latest bombshell coming from Providence, we found out yesterday about this $50 million that, that we just hadn't gotten around to because we hadn't asked, which, you know, as we find out today, like most of these edicts, they're filled with half-truths. Mr. Mitchell or maybe Mr. Prigano, could you explain what this $50 million is? And could you perhaps explain why we never applied for it? Because that seems to be such a controversial issue. And, you know, if we were allowed $50 million or whatever, we should have had it. But obviously, like you, we didn't know about it. So, or maybe perhaps it's being mislabeled? So I don't know, maybe Mr. Prigano or Mr. Mitchell can speak to it?
Alex, you want to respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, there are, there are actually two different pots of money. The $50 million you're talking about and another pot of money, $41 million, which is called the S of funds. And it's elementary, secondary, some of the beef. And what, what that $530,000 that we're entitled to from that, and it basically is calculated by taking 83% of your Title I funds. So that represents 83% of the Title I money Cumberland receives. And then they did, they reduced our state aid by that amount of money in order to help try Alice to stay budget FY20. So then, you know, if you look in, in the, in the CRP, which is where you file these things, the, it says that we've been approved, but yet today we couldn't go in and request the cash that would be out for the, we're using that money to reimburse our tuitions and psychological services and Chromebooks and things that we purchased last year between after-school money will come in. Those expenditures actually will be moved to the grant, this, where this money will sit. And that will free up $500,000 in our, in our budget next year. Last year, which will help grow the surplus. And we'll use that money on one-time items that we need to, that we need to acquire in FY21. So that's about that. She says no one had applied for is the COVID relief funds. And I think they've changed the name to, they didn't like relief funds. And I think the state, maybe that's their contribution, they've changed the name. But it's $636,001 that's coming to us. And we were working on it today in my office. The documents weren't even available to submit the funds until within the last week, week and a half. There was some, they've gone back and forth with changes. They were going to let you go back and try to use some of it in FY20. Then the governor changed that, then ride in meeting with the state officials, got them to put that back in. It's been back and forth, there's been a lot of, you know, back and forth at the state level. And finally, the documents and that for go somewhere like that. And we're working on it today. You have to get that application in by the end of September, September 30th. And the money has to be spent by December 30th. So, you know, another piece of it, depending on how you use the money, you have to continue to fund it from January on the rest of the school year. You just can't take the money and each a salary, for example, for four months and then not, you know, not budget that salary or some type of employee that you might hire a temp or something and then, and then lay off of something at the end of December. You have to budget it in the second half, too. So items like that, you're in 40 cents on it. Is look, try to use the money on the ventilation study we did. There's no, we won't have to budget that money again the second half. The UNIVENTS that we're going to repair, the HEPA units you bought for $80,500, those things are all going to flow, hopefully, through the COVID relief funds. And they'll send that application in no later than the beginning of next week.
I just have a follow-up question. Actually, I think we should spend the money on getting Alex some new Wi-Fi. So, but I do have a follow-up.
Mr. Chandler can get him Wi-Fi access. And I think we should have Mr. Chandler get him that.
Is he still, I do have a follow-up question, Mr. Prigano. Now, though, these one-time expenses, you know, one of the issues that was brought up in budget were the Chromebooks and how districts are scrambling around, there's a shortage on Chromebooks. Do we actually have to physically have the Chromebooks in hand by December 31st? Or do we just have to have a purchase order?
Right, originally, I was going to put the Chromebooks in the COVID relief funds. But being uncertain on when they might be delivered, I haven't done that now. That's why I've got them in the regular budget and looking to do a math to lease to pay for them because you, you, you have to have them.
Good dial-up.
Yeah, you dial up would certainly be better.
Miracle Online.
Once, one, every three words you get.
Yeah, AOL, all right. Anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Mrs. Waters.
Just, just around the the work that we're doing around the ventilation. Mr. Mitchell, can we get a, not necessarily a project plan, but some kind of listing of what the priority is as far as, you know, the work that's getting done? Or just, just an update to share with families on specifically what, what progress we're making as, as we make the progress?
Sure. And I, I'm hopeful that when we get these teams, you know, and we're going to try and get more service techs if we can, we get these teams in on Monday. I'm hoping that we can cover some ground. So I will, I will do that, Mrs. Waters.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mrs. Friedman?
I just, I just want to follow up to my own comment that I made earlier, which, because I'm afraid maybe it might have come across as, as too harsh. But I think it's important that people know the limitations that we have so that we can really work on moving forward. I mean, all of us have, or almost all of us have kids in the school system. My daughter's a junior. My son graduated last year. You know, I know how hard it is and I know how much heartache there is too with all of this. My son missed prom, he missed lacrosse, he missed graduation. I know it's hard, but we have to remember, we're in the middle of a global pandemic and we are trying to make the best of it that we can. But I just want to assure everyone that we are, you know, the health and safety comes first and we've made some commitments to the CDC guidelines. And we don't want to sway from those. And, and all of us want our kids in the classroom as much as we can, as safely as possible. So I know it was hard for some people to hear that last night, but we, we have to know the courage that we're playing with here. And there are some real limitations to full in-person schooling during a global pandemic. So I just wanted to add to that and let you all know, we all sympathize, empathize and feel the pain and the stress of everything that's going on. But I think as soon as we all kind of accept the situation we're in and can help our kids through it, and sometimes I think it's harder for the parents than it is for the kids, just the better we all will be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, before we move on to the, to the reports of standing committees, I just need to go back and get a, take a vote on the consent agenda. I skipped through it and I didn't take the vote, so.
Motion approved.
Boy, don't jump. Mr. Fiorello makes a motion. Favor?
Aye.
I closed. I have it. Alex, are you listening? How quick they can talk there on the internet? Okay, so we're going to move on to reporter standing committees bills, Mr. Salvatore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair D'Monica. Finance did meet this evening at 5:30 and payment of bills passed three to zero in the amount of $323,065.89. And I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Salvatore makes a motion, payment of bills, $323,065.89. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Waters, was it?
Bernardo.
And Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero. Thank you. Next, Mr. Salvatore's fiscal management subcommittee update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Fiscal management did meet, as I said earlier, at 5:30. A couple of topics that of importance to mention to this committee later on in the agenda. We're going to be talking about SCPR 9 2020-16. It is a resolution that was passed in fiscal three to zero. We're going to purchase 200 air purifiers, which we'll discuss a little bit later on. So that was good news. We're going to move forward with trying to get the air pure in the high school, in the schools. We did the payment of bills. Mr. Prignano gave us a quick overview and some budget adjustments for FY21. And Mr. Chair, I believe that was about it. And Mr. Mitchell, I apologize, Mr. Mitchell did give an update in regards to some other items with the air.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by.
Alex, come on. Alex, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Salvatore, thank you. Next is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, Policy and Procedures has not met due to central administration and others being very tied up. I am hopeful that we will have a meeting by the end of this month, though, with some new policies on the agenda.
Right, thank you. Next, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update. I'm sorry, next is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update, Mrs. Friedman.
Yeah, much like Mr. Fiorello's committee, we also haven't met while the central administration has been getting everything ready for the start of school, but we will hopefully also meet certainly before the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. And last is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Mrs. Bernardo.
Yes, we are in the same situation where we have not met yet, so we will get something on the calendar soon.
Great, thank you. All right, so next is comments from the public. If you wish to address the school committee, the policy is three minutes, and as Mr. Adams, our attorney, eloquently told us last week, we're not allowed to answer you back because of the way the school committee agendas are done. So if you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and address for the record, please. So, Mr. Chandler, could you explain to the public how they can gain access to make a comment?
Sure. If you're on the phone, you can use star nine to raise your hand, and we can allow you to speak, or use star six to mute, intermute yourself if you've already been allowed to speak. So if you'd like to raise your hand now, we can let you on.
Okay, Mr. Chandler, is there anyone raising the Ian for this first comment from the public?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, we'll move on then. Under New Business, we have discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction request for the 2021 school year. We have two renewals, and we have 13 new parents that submitted their children's name in for homeschool, and I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins, second by.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernardo and Mrs. Friedman, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
We don't. Aye. Aye.
I have it seven to zero, thank you. Next is discussing the under vote to approve revised 2021 school calendar. This is the Unified Rhode Island calendar that was put in the folder. It seems that it keeps on changing with the governor, but we now have a new calendar for parents to get off the website, and so we need a motion or a discussion in regards to the new calendar.
Make a motion to approve with discussion.
Mrs. Waters makes a motion. We have a second for discussion?
I have a second with discussion.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion, second for discussion. Go ahead, Mrs. Waters.
I, I mean, I, not really relevant, sort of relevant to the calendar, but regarding the graduation date, as I, I know it's, you know, a crazy time, but have we put any thought into graduation this year, or are we tabling that?
Mr. Mitchell, I, I, I think we need to set a, a graduation date. To be honest, I, I need to look at the, I need to look at the revised.
It says June 11.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so I, I, I get, what is your question, Mrs. Waters?
If, if Cumberland has made plans for graduation yet?
Oh, oh, I, oh, I, I, I don't, you mean like, you know, have we identified a, a, a location to actually have the ceremony?
Yeah, and if, if this is the date, and.
Well, that, that is, well, yeah, that, that is the date that has been identified, and I, to be honest, I, I will consult with Mr. Costa on, you know, whether or not we have gotten into any sort of an agreement with a location as of yet, so I will follow up on that, Mrs. Waters.
Yeah, thank you. I understand it's premature, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, but people have seniors.
Right. All right, anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
What are the changes? Maybe, Mrs. Freeman, because we discussed the calendar, obviously, before all this, but one of the things I noticed is that there are Jewish holidays off, and there's the Muslim holiday off as well. Is that a change? Because I remember we, we had a discussion about making sure that there's a mindful of, you know, more mindful of, you know, giving exams, like I mentioned, my district, we have a kind of a policy, we don't give exams on religious holidays, even if we are in session.
I thought the discussion that we had, I thought they had changed it, and they grouped Good Friday, Yom Kippur, and the Muslim holiday together. And so in order to give Good Friday off, we have to, they were all grouped as one option on the revised calendar from the state, so that's how it, I, I believe that's how it came to be. I don't, unless somebody remembers something differently.
No, I, I think you're right, Mrs. Freeman. This came revised from the state. And we agreed as a school committee that we would instruct our staff that we wouldn't do exams on those days either, so that people could truly, you know, have the holiday off.
But you are right, Mr. Collins. Before that change came from the state, we just had that discussion of not including the Jewish holidays and just making people aware of it, but then it came from the state that those three holidays were grouped together, and you either got all of them or none of them.
Yeah, I know in Massachusetts, it's not as uniform. It goes basically by towns that have larger Jewish populations, like Brookline, Canton, Sharon, get the Jewish holidays off, and, you know, so, but it's more uniform now, good.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment in regards to the calendar? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the revised calendar for.
I think we have two motions.
We do? I'm sorry. All right, yeah, actually, we did make, you made the motion, Mr. Collins, for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero, thank you. Next is Mr. Mitchell, just on one thing, on this revised calendar, has April 9, 2020 at the very bottom. We could change that to September 10, 2020. Now, that's been revised to, just so parents see it's been updated as of today. At the very bottom of the list of dates.
Yeah, I, I will follow up on that.
All right, thank you. Next is discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCPR 9-2020-16 to purchase of air purifiers with HEPA filters. Mr. Salvatore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like I mentioned, this passed in fiscal three to zero. This is a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to purchase 200 air purifiers from ENE of Canton, Massachusetts in an amount not to exceed $80,500, and I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Salvatore makes a motion to approve the purchase from ENE for the 200 HEPA filters. Do I have a motion, Mr. Salvatore? Second, Mrs. Waters, do I have any discussion? I just want to say thank you to Superintendent for reaching out to myself Ian, the mayor, on Friday about getting these filters available to the schools district as quick as possible, and I think the mayor and I were both in agreement that we need to move forward quickly, so thank you all, and for the superintendent for his diligence in getting this done. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero, thank you very much. Next is the second portion of comments from the public. You have a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the record, and again, the school committee cannot reply to these comments, but we will get you answers somehow. So, Mr. Chandler, do we have anyone that's looking to speak to us?
At this time, I did not see anybody with their hands up?
Okay. Right, we'll move forward then. Next is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any of the school committee members have a comment? Go ahead, Mr. Collins, start off.
First of all, I, I can't believe how short this meeting is relative to the last couple of meetings, or all summer. But Monday is the first day of school, believe it or not. I mean, believe it, because it's happening. So, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty going into the year, but I, I just want to wish, you know, both the teachers and the administrators the best of luck going into an uncertain year. I mean, I know this is, you know, it's not going to be easy. Miss Freeman already alluded to, didn't allude to it, she spoke to it at great length, but, you know, our teachers are resilient, they're going to adjust, and whatever happens, I know, and I've already told dozens of teachers this in town, I know they're going to move heaven and earth to make it happen, and we are very, very lucky to have them, so I just wish everybody the best of luck, and I look forward to a healthy and successful year.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have a comment? And we got Mr. Fiorello, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I've been, I've been going on to a few more schools again, and the amount of work that the staff, the teachers, the building secretaries, the custodians, the maintenance people, everyone involved, the TAs, is really, it's a Herculean task that they've undertaken, and they're working very, very hard to get this done. They're collaborating with each other and from different schools to come up with best practices, so I just want to say hats off to the staff, and I wish everybody well also, starting off this new year, I mean, the new school year. I also just want to ask that we could have, you know, regular updates on the ventilation, the readiness of the classrooms, so that we can maybe make a final vote or, or not, I guess, and actually opening up for hybrid come October 13th, to make sure that we have enough classrooms.
I agree. Mr., anyone else? I would just like to say that I hope school starts off well for Durham this week. Coming up, I know in the past couple of years, we've not had a good start, and I hope they with the, the amount of children that are going to be riding on the school buses for the beginning of the year, hopefully we get it right, we don't get the phone calls that no child wasn't picked up or they were missed, and finally, just, I would like to say that State Rep Jim McGlaughlin has been following us in regards to the request for the National Guard to come and give us a hand. And because we're just not getting that message through to the state that he has a phone call scheduled tomorrow morning with the Adage, Adage General from the National Guard for Rhode Island to talk to them about sending people here to help us get these unit ventilators open and get them working properly so that students can come back, and I just, just like to, you know, let everyone know that he's been reaching out for me almost daily in regards to this matter, so thank you to State Rep. And to everyone, the teachers, the staff, the administrators that have worked all summer long on this, I just want to say thank you, and we'll do what we got to do to get these schools open and running, that's the I know my wife is an educator, and she just wants the best for her students as well. And finally, just for our members, just please, please leave your schedule open in case we have to have another special meeting for any reason, because, you know, it changes daily in Mr. Mitchell's office in regards to what we got to do if we, if we're needed to vote, and we're going to be needed to vote, so thank you all. Anyone else?
One, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Football, football stats tonight, so just want to remind people of that, so that's usually.
That's why.
The start of football season and the start of school go hand in hand, so go Pats.
That's why we got through this agenda so quick tonight. All right, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for the work you're doing. And do we have anything for executive session tonight?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you all.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Beat me, Heidi. Second by Mr. Collins.
Motion by Mrs. Waters, and second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I have it seven to zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Have a great, back to school, everyone.
Thank you.